All right, good evening. Welcome to our school board workshop for the purpose of the first draft of our comprehensive budget for next school year. We are short a few folks today due to illness. Lauren is out and Teresa is out feeling under the weather. Misty, I expected, so she might come in mid-meeting from an out-of-town work conflict. We still have a forum, so we're good to go. Upcoming meetings, March 26th will be another budget workshop. We will be back at the Green and Gloucester High School Library at 6:30. And if everyone would join me for the pledge, seeing as we're official.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get going, any comment from the audience? All right, thanks for coming. And we're going to have Dr. Turner lead us through our agenda tonight, which will start with some parking lot questions from last time and then a look at the presentation.
Thank you. So, we did decide to compile the questions that we got, a lot of them were questions that were asked and answered in the meeting, but we felt like there was some value in documenting that a little bit for folks. So, you know, you have another option other than watching the video if you want to see, and some of it is follow-up information. So, I provided you each with that copy because we didn't finish it until a little bit before the meeting. It is in the online material, so if you are interested in seeing them there, you can. I just, whenever I'm doing something late, I try to also make sure we have hard copies. So, I wanted to just make a couple of points on a lot of this. This is information you can look through when and if you are interested. We did add some descriptions of some clubs folks were asking about, saying they'd love to hear more about it, so we added some descriptions there. The other big thing, we added some more detail again. There were some questions about the IB technology courses, as well as what are the most popular IB classes that are there. Ms. Graylish and Ms. Costello spent some time adding some information to you for you to peruse on that. The other piece we added, which is sort of like the last eye-crossing four pages of this document, is pursuant to a question that was brought up around kind of how we handle Schedule B and how we budget for Schedule B. And Schedule B is all of our stipends for athletics and co-curriculars, and that is a process that these positions are approved by the personnel committee, and then the board, and then the teachers' union goes through a process of deciding how much that person should pay based on a formula approved in the contract. So, what you have in this spreadsheet that's attached, that I don't really expect any of you to go over in detail, but the detail's there if you're interested, this is every currently-approved position in Schedule B. So, every position that's on this document has at some point, some of them many ages ago, have gone through a process of being approved by the board and added to the union contract. For every one of those positions, we've added information about going back to the 18, 19 school year, whether or not that position was filled, or whether that position went unfilled. That's the information, that is one of the pieces of information we use when we're trying to decide what we budget for in Schedule B, because every, we don't budget for every stipend every year. We look at what we think kids are interested in, and we budget accordingly with those that we think we are going to run in the coming year. So, you'll notice some will have "not applicable." It means those didn't exist in those years, and then you'll see when they started existing. Again, that means they went through the board process in that way. In the right-hand column, we've added some notes. They are things that we intend to remove from next year's budget based on participation over the last few years and what we anticipate in the coming year. There are ones that are not currently in our budget. It's a, you know, stipend that maybe has existed for a long time, but we haven't needed it, and so we haven't included it in our budget. So, that is really, again, probably a level of detail, a step beyond what you were looking for, but we wanted to provide for you that, some of the information that we use, along with student enrollment and student interest, because we're constantly asking kids what they're interested in, to create the budget that we have created. So, that is my report out this Schedule B, sorry, now I'm stuck in Schedule B mode. This frequently-asked questions document will be added to our budget page. Excuse me, parking lot questions, maybe they're also frequently-asked. And then any questions that come up over the next couple of days, we'll just, we'll keep adding and to make sure that those are really accessible for people to find it one-click shopping.
All right, thanks. Any questions about the questions?
I think I might have questions about the questions when we get into that part of the budget discussion.
Okay, but we're, everyone's comfortable moving into the presentation?
I just have one question. On cue, I'm sorry. When can we expect the salibars? It says the saliba is currently open, and then it says we're planning to open a saliba. Oh, I see, at the middle school.
It's currently open at the high school, yeah. And we're, it's coming soon at the middle school.
Yeah, all right. I didn't see it the first time.
I buried my lead, that's what I should have started with, really.
I know, this is big news.
I have one question on this, this table that has all the stipend positions. Is there a current dollar-figure amount column that's just not being shown?
If you look at the teacher union contract, all of that information is included in the contract.
And will the board be getting a copy? I know when I first came on the board, we had the contracts, but I haven't seen a contract since.
They are posted on our website. If you need a print copy, we could potentially help you with that.
Okay, thank you.
But they are publicly available on our website. All of our, both of our union negotiated agreements are there.
All right. You want to jump into our, okay, I have printed the slides for you. I know for some folks taking notes on the slides, and then I know it's kind of hard sometimes in here for you to see them, so I have brought them to you. I will sort of encourage you to stay present with me as we go through this. We really are trying to tell the story of how we got to where we got, what we considered, what we looked at. And so, if you're too busy flipping ahead to try to find a number, you're gonna, you're gonna miss some stuff that I think is pretty important. So, I also sort of ask you to stay present in the moment. A lot of questions that come up, I think, are answered through the process of the presentation. I have provided you with paper, and I didn't think, I don't think I put pens out, now that I think about it, but if you need one, we have one, we can grab one for you. Just try to kind of capture the questions, maybe try to save them to the end, because I do have a lot of information for you tonight, so I think we might proactively answer some questions that might come up organically, but I also don't want to kind of run out of time to get through all of the information. Do you mind? This presentation will be posted on our website tomorrow. Okay, welcome to the draft budget for March 19th. We did present a version.
I don't want to be distracted.
We did present a version of this to the finance committee last week. Finance committee, we have made a lot of changes, so hopefully you'll notice that. So, what I'm going to go over tonight, the first is kind of talk about what the budget foundation is, what we build a budget on. Then we're going to talk about the processes and factors that we consider as we're building that budget. We're going to go through some of those budget drivers, what's moving that budget both up and down. And then we're going to flip in, talk about revenue, translate that through to some estimated tax impacts, and then talk about next steps. So, our budget foundations. At our core, our budget is designed to achieve our strategic plan. I know those are a lot of letters, you can read them on our website as well, but we are focused on high-quality instruction is goal number one, making sure that kids have those skills for lifelong learning, work, and citizenship. We are focused on schools that are safe, nurturing, and responsive to kids' needs. That is our second strategic plan goal. Our third is around facilities, co-curricular, and other student service needs that we are focusing on that for children, and then our fourth is around collaborative and coordinated employees. So, those are the four tenants of when we build a budget, what we are trying to accomplish. Those strategic plan goals are rooted in our core beliefs, which is something we probably need to think about integrating, talking about more, because I think we make core beliefs when we make a strategic plan, and then we don't really look on them again. So, I think the core beliefs are really important, and I am very anti-read a slide, but in this case, I'm reading the slide because I think it's very important. We, as a community, came together to decide what are the core beliefs of our school system, and we said that we, yeah, try that again, that implementation of our strategic plan will ensure that we have continuously improved the image and standing of MSAD-15 in our own communities and beyond. GNG will be a beacon of excellence that others look to as a model of how to school districts should run. We will have increased our attendance rates, and we will have created increased opportunity for staff and students to be creative, emphasizing that we value problem-solving. So, at the core of what we are trying to fund in our schools, it is achievement of these core beliefs. It is also the achievement of our vision. I'm not going to read this one to you, I'll be nice. But remember that we do have a vision of supporting the children in our schools to make sure that they can be contributing members of our community in the future. So, that is what we build our budget off of. Unless we forget our mission, at the end of the day, what we are charged to do as a school system is prepare students for their next step, instilling inspirations through rigorous and relevant educational experiences. That is what we are charged to do, and I believe that's what we have done in the budget we have built for you. So, let's go through that process. This is our timeline of things, and you'll see, we're many checks into the process, which is kind of nice, but this budget process actually starts in November, when we brought forward our academic achievement, we talked about where we were strong and where we had some areas of need. You then received written annual reports from every department and every school in December. We started talking about budget factors in our meetings on January 18th, January 15th, and February 12th. You've had department reports on January 22nd, 29th, and February 26th. Overriding all of this throughout the entire process and moving forward, building levels and department levels are going through line item, light item expenditure reviews and budgets. So, that is Jennifer and David and I sitting down with each principal, with each cost expenditure manager, going through their budget, line item by line item by line item, making sure that we all have a very deep shared understanding of what is there and why it is there. And what we do when we do that, we look back at two years of spending, as well as what the need is for the coming year. Where we are now is in the draft present budget presentations, so we went through the finance committee on the 12th and got some feedback. You're here now on the 19th for the first budget workshop, and then we have a workshop again on the 26th. We then go through a series of finance committee and board budget votes, our validation meeting, ending with our referendum on June 10th. All of the materials for all of these meetings can be found on our website. Board, I know you're like, oh my gosh, stop talking about the website already, but msad15.org, if you scroll to the bottom, click on budget, you will see every one of these meetings that are referenced in this timeline and all of the materials that were presented. One-stop shopping, please check it out if you have any questions about how we got here. So, we're going to hit some highlights from the process. I'm not going to go deeply, because as I said, those are available to you to go look at. A few academic achievement strengths we wanted to highlight. 60% of our district cohorts performed statistically better in the last school year than they did in the school year before, so we're seeing great growth in our students. 57% of our district cohorts performed at state expectations in mathematics. 100% of our district cohorts performed at state expectations in reading, based on the state math assess, uh, state reading assessment, and 100% of our district cohorts significantly outperformed state averages in science. Some areas of focus we noted in these process, mathematics, both normative and criterion data indicate that there's some room for growth in mathematics achievement, so math will continue to be a focus of our schools. Middle level, while cohorts are improving here and there, our middle level, our middle school norm and criteria data continues to be the lowest in the district, so some focus on moving that. And then growth, we saw some dips in growth in kids, particularly around the pandemic and following. Most of our cohorts are now recovering, but we would like to see them continue to exceed and excel. Another piece we presented not that long ago, around budget drivers, were our enrollment history and projections. So, what you're seeing is going back to 13, 14, how many students we've had each year. We are predicting in the coming school year, we will have 1,809 students, the year after that, 1,801. So, if you go back to 2021, where we had 1,800 students, we have gone just up a little bit and back down a little bit, but we're sitting right about where I expect us to level out for the next 10 years or so. Unless there is a significant change in code and, like, code rules and zoning and all of that, that would spurn significant building, I would kind of anticipate that where we are right now is where we're going to be for a while. You also received a staffing report with tons of detail about who we have for staff. We share, what we're sharing with you here in this slide is the number of teachers that we have at each grade level or each grade span. This is what we call FTEs, or full-time equivalents, class, regular ed classroom teachers. You're also seeing our district class size goal, so that's a priority that we have set as a district, of how many students we want to see in the classroom, what our priority would be for that. The third line gives you how many of those full-time equivalent positions would be required in order for us to meet that, that district goal. The bottom line on this data is that our class size, the number of FTEs that we have of teachers, is about right. When we look at our predicted enrollments for next year, and we look at how many classroom teachers we have at each grade span, we are at about the right place to continue to meet that district goal. We don't necessarily need an increase, but we also don't have room for a decrease at this time. This is an overview of the strengths and areas of need that were reported in the district and department reports. I am not going to go over this. I encourage you to read it on your own time, or to go back and look at the presentations that were given by all of these departments over those three meetings, or, and also, it's in their written reports. This is just kind of a summary for you. For the board, you all sat through those meetings, you don't need me to go over it again, but what you should see, I hope, is a direct line through, from these areas of need that we've identified on this slide and in those presentations through to the budget that we have built for you. So, what are our primary budget drivers? So, we started with our, what we call our maintenance of effort assumptions, and so that is, if we change nothing about what we do as a school, what is it going to cost us to open the doors next year? We presented this, but this number earlier this year. That's assuming that all contractual salaries and step increases go into place. We guessed health insurance at 10%. Unfortunately, we don't know that till later this spring, but that's what we had originally put in. We have the paid family medical leave increase, we've been talking about that for a long time. Guessing our dental insurance rate at 5%, a lot of these have to be our best estimates, because we just don't know. And then we applied an inflation rate of 3% to any non-payroll expense. We also updated our principal and interest payments based on the bond that was approved by the community already. Based on those numbers, on January 15th, we shared that it, we would require $35,289, $289,035 to open the doors with no changes. Unfortunately, we got some more news, and it wasn't news we loved. The first is that we got a letter from our health insurance carrier that increases could be up to 17.89% this year. We don't anticipate that we will be at 17.89, because where you're put in that range depends on kind of how much your usage was and a couple other factors, but it is much higher of a range than we have ever seen before. So, we recalculated our maintenance of effort using a 12% placeholder, we're hoping that that's going to be enough. Property insurance, we had estimated the three, we used the 3% inflation factor, we've since gotten news from our company that our expected increase is actually going to be closer to 10%. And then, we also had out-of-district placements just at a 3% increase, and the quoted costs were actually significantly more than that. When we factor in this additional information, as of March 12th, we required a 6.52 increase on expenses just to open the doors with absolutely no changes to anything that we So, that was a starting point. We're making some budget-neutral changes to try to address needs. One is, one of the needs that was identified was additional technology instruction at the high school. We're going to use our technology integrator, a little bit of his time to provide some direct instruction to students, so he will now have a couple of courses on his caseload, so that we can offer more classes to students, and we could do it without adding additional full-time equivalent teacher positions. We will be eliminating the halftime advisory coordinator position, that was a project Dr. King brought forward and through advisory coordination. As you may recall, if you were here, that was a proposal that would be a three-year add, and this is year three. So, next year, that, that role is going to transition. So, the individual in the role has been .5 advisory coordinator, or halftime advisory coordinator, halftime IB coordinator, because we need someone that manages, having IB just has a lot that goes with it, reports and helping kids with testing, and it's a lot of regulation in order to be allowed to give IB diploma, so we need someone who can attend to that. So, that person's been doing half and half. We are proposing that in the coming year, instead of doing the halftime advisory coordinator, that that teacher would be added to the English Language Arts Department. It is our lowest staff department at the high school at this time, and we have teachers from other departments who currently teach English classes to help us meet the need. So, we saw that as a way to add some more capacity to the English Department at the high school, without having to add a position onto the bottom-line budget. Additionally, that teacher is going to be doing some career readiness, so in her role as advisory coordinator, she was able to work with the local university and do some dual enrollment career readiness work, so kids can get college credit for that, and it works on that transition between school and whatever their next steps are. So, we're really excited to be able to offer that as a new opportunity for students, without it hitting the bottom line as an add. The third piece is looking at joining the early adopters cohort to access some additional pre-K revenue. As you will hear more of in the next month's meeting, we will eventually have a responsibility for children three and four years old and meeting their needs under the Individuals with Disabilities and Education Act. We, up until this point, have worked with a community partner who would reimburse us for staff to provide some services to kids in our pre-K program. They have not been reimbursing us at the level that was originally promised, and if we don't do something, we either have to cut a teacher into ed texts from that program, or we would have to add those to the local budget. If we sign on with the state's early adopters program, we can access approximately another $400,000 in revenue that would cover those expenses, and it does not have to be an add in the local budget. Stay tuned for much more about that in our report at next year's school, at next month's school board meeting. So, those are some ways that we're looking to address the needs in our schools without hitting the bottom line of the budget. So, the rest of the needs that are identified and quantified in our budget, we do need an additional special services teacher, this is specifically at the middle school. You may recall, last year, we shared with you that there was a program based on the IEPs of the children leaving the middle school and entering the middle school that we could do without a teacher at that school for this current school year, and it was represented as a budget cut. Based on the, we shared at that time, it was probably only a one-year situation, it is only a one-year situation, based on students that have moved into the district, as well as the students exiting our school and the students entering the middle school, we will need that additional FTE teacher back into the budget for the coming school year. We also proposed moving ed texts to 35 hours a week. There's, there's some inconsistency with how many hours ed texts have, some have 32, some have 30, some have 32 and a half, some have 35, and so, we're kind of proposing that we move everybody to 35, that would cost about $165,000, a little under. We need some capacity in school psychology, it's been difficult to keep school psychologists. We originally had three school psychologists on staff, we are currently down to two, we did cut one of our three positions, we have one of those filled, we have one currently unfilled. So, we've been looking at ways to add capacity in that way. One is by working with our colleges to have psychology interns, which we approximate, if we were able to get two interns, it would cost about $60,000. And then we have increased consulting costs, because we don't, when you don't have someone in the position all the time, and when you had three positions, now you're down to two, the need for outside of consulting goes up a bit, so that we figure would cost about $20,000. Moving to transportation, we're moving forward with two buses and a van purchase, that would be a total of $440,000, just a little bit more. We'll talk more about it as we sort of get to our next steps, but what we're trying to do is get to a place where we're purchasing a couple of buses every year and replacing our fleet. What we'd like to see is that the, the transportation investment in new vehicles becomes steady over time. How it's been right now is we buy two buses one year, we buy none the next, we buy one, we buy none, we buy three, so you see our budget have big swings up and down based on whether we're purchasing new vehicles or not. We're trying to get to a place where we're keeping our fleet functioning, running, safe, and steady, so that we're looking at that replacement schedule, so we already have a plan for, as a, as a bus starts to age out of its useful life, we already have a plan for replacing it, but we'll talk more about that. Many of you saw the bus lift at the garage is no longer working, we had a little bit of a hope that a small little fix was gonna take care of it, our dreams did not come true on that, it will cost about $50,000 to replace that lift. Cellular radios has been a hot topic, our current bus radio system does not work in all areas of our communities, so moving to a cellular radio that extends the network of availability and communication between schools and the buses would cost about $18,000. And then, the software costs, our bus transportation software has previously been covered by the state, it is no longer going to be covered by the state, those costs now have to be covered by our local district, that's about $5,800. We are recommending at this point that we add an additional $150,000 investment into our facilities and capital. We need to do more work on our facilities, and the only way we're going to do it is if we start investing. This would, this would double the current budget, we have $150,000 in the current school year, if we add 150, that brings us to 300,000. Unfortunately, 300,000 is probably one project off of our capital list, so it's still maybe not quite enough, but we got to do, we got to start somewhere, so we, that's where we started, was adding 150,000. Adult education is requesting an additional 25,000 to support their ongoing operating expenses. Middle school, we were talking about middle-level achievement and math being a focus, we're recommending a materials purchase in mathematics, it would cost about $92,000, just over. And then some other things we're looking at, summer school, our regular education summer school program that we have offered for a long time now has always been covered out of grant funds, various pots of grant funding, that grant funding is going away, if we wanted to continue that program, it would cost us about $200,000. We're moving forward with some engagement software and contracts to kind of upgrade our ability to engage with the community, that's about $17,000. And then, our, our budget was not reflective of our contracts for professional development, so in many of our contracts, there's a specific dollar amount allocated to employees that they are allowed to use for professional development, that did not match what had been budgeted. And we've run into a few issues over the years of, when you're not budgeting what is in someone's contract, it can get you in trouble because it's in their contract, if they ask for it, we have to give it to them. So, we'd want to just address that upfront, make sure we're meeting our contractual obligations to have the budget match what is in the contract, it would cost about 17,000 more than what we currently have. So, when you put all of that together, the maintenance plus the need, we're looking at needing $36,955,952, that would represent a 10.9%, 10.96% increase in the expense budget from last year, for this current school year to next school year. Let me just stop there and say, this is not the budget we're proposing, stay with me. If we were to keep what we have and address those needs, that is what we are looking at. So, then we stepped back and said, so 10.96, it's not a thing, we need to go back and look at what we're doing, and I'll be honest with you, there was never And I'll be honest with you, there was never a time where like, well, let's just see what it is. We, we knew we were going to have to do this work. I just think it's important for folks to kind of understand the process of how, how we get and, and what it looks like when we maintain and ask for what we need. That's what it looks like. So now we went back to the drawing board and said, okay, so where, where can we be creative so that we are sensitive to the community and, and bring forward an increase that is more palatable? So we have done a big round of reductions and deprioritization. This list has been expanded quite a bit since the finance committee saw it last week. So if you're on the committee and you're thinking, wow, this looks different, because it does. Starting with those maintenance of equity reductions, looking at IEPs, we believe there's at least one FTE ed tech under special services that we won't need next year that we needed this year due to kids moving in and out. I will say, we also are continuing that look at IEPs to make sure that what we have for staffing is appropriate. But at the moment, we're at, we think we can do with one less ed tech for sure. The SRO vehicle was in last year's budget. We don't need to buy them a vehicle again this year, so that comes in as a reduction. We are looking at reducing our secretarial support at the secondary level. We currently have three secretaries at the middle school and three sec, three, and I think it's 2.8 or 2.6, I don't remember, three bodies, three people at the high school. One of the three people at the high school is focused on attendance. She's not full-time, but she's focused on attendance. We have a retirement at the middle school, which gave us an opportunity to stand back and say, how do we do business and how could we do it differently? So we're currently exploring how we might look at attendance five through 12 instead of separating that out, middle school and high school. And we believe that we can do that by reducing the one secretary who's, who's retiring, not to replace that and then add some capacity to one of the other positions, not at the same level. It would be losing a 1.0 full-time person and adding in like a point two that we can still meet the needs of our schools. So we put that reduction in. We've been going through the athletics and co-curricular with a fine tooth comb to make sure we fully understood what is in the budget and what is not in the budget and what we'd like to support in the coming year. And we made some adjustments there. Back to that line item, going through line by line by line, making sure we all understand. There are a few places where we found that, you know, the, the cost center person, the principal, let's say, had budgeted this in this line, but then central offices said, oh, they forgot to budget for this and they budgeted it in another line. And so they're both right, like neither one of those is wrong. It could go under either line, but how about we not put it in both lines? So going through that, like with a fine tooth comb, has been effective. I wouldn't say we found hundreds of thousands of dollars, but every $50 we find is $50 that we are more efficient. So every dollar is important. We are going to have some savings by moving positions and tuition around between general fund and local entitlement. And this is a little confusing, so bear with me, but I want to make sure folks kind of understand what we're doing here. Under the main state retirement system, anytime you put a budget in a grant, you have to contribute a significant more to main state retirement than you do if it comes out of your general fund. To the tune of, it's generally around 4% of someone's salary you have to contribute if you pay for them out of the general fund. If you pay for them out of grant funds, you have to contribute 30%. So it's a huge difference. We did some work with Holly, Jen was fantastic, walking all of us through it. Holly was great. Essentially, what we're going to do is take the people that we currently pay out of our local entitlement grant and move them into the general fund budget. And we're going to move our tuition costs so that out of district placement, when kids are, when we have to send students to special purpose private schools, that is an allowable expense under local entitlement. So we'll move local entitlement instead in, sorry, we'll move the tuition for special purpose into local entitlement. Making that switch is going to save us about $25,000. So small switch, little confusing, important one. We're looking at reducing 1.5 FTE teachers at the secondary level using attrition. That's being sensitive to our reducing population at the high school. We have an idea of where we're going to go with that. At this time, we believe that we can do without a .5 music teacher position that is currently open. Part of that is because that position is currently open and we were able to cover it with our current staff without changing the amount of music kids were getting. So kids are taking all the same classes. We have not had to bring in a long-term staff. We were able to cover it with our current teachers. So what we're looking at is really building that 712. Right now, we have a choral teacher who teaches 712. So building some of that 712 connection and that music across middle school and high school. We think we can maintain the program and, and potentially even grow it. And at this point with .5 less of a teacher. The other reduction we're looking at is world language. When we look across all of the departments, we look for the, the teachers that have the biggest course loads and the lightest course loads. What are kids taking? And when we have a department where we have a lot of teachers who are covering study halls or able to teach a class off, off content. So like our French teacher picks up a couple of ELA sections. It, it tells us that maybe that's someplace to look. So looking at world language, we currently offer three world languages at our high school. Realistically, a high school our size tends to, tends to be more at two. So that's sort of one dynamic in the decision. The other dynamic coming forward is that we have offered an American Sign Language program for a long time. It is one of the programs I am most proud of in this school system. It does beautiful things for kids. It does beautiful things for our community. It is amazing. Our American Sign Language teacher is retiring. We knew she was going to be retiring this year and we have been actively recruiting to get people to be ready to apply for her position for almost three years. And we have not had anyone have any interest at all. We also have a, a number of school districts around us who have been actively seeking ASL teachers for a number of years and have not been able to fill their position. So as we look at our staffing levels at our school, as much as it breaks my heart and Sadie's heart to consider reducing that position and eliminating that program, it is probably the department that makes the most sense. And then additionally, I look at kids who are building their schedules right now. And there are sort of two eventualities that could happen. I could say to them now, we won't be having ASL next year, build your schedule accordingly. Or we could keep it in and we could try to hire for it and hope that someone came out of the wood after three years of recruiting and getting nowhere. Maybe that might happen. But if it doesn't, then come the first week of August, I have to look at families and kids and say, I'm really sorry, we can't fill it. You need to go change your schedules now. And you better hope there's some classes you're interested in that still have room. Neither of those feel very good to me. I'm, I'm very upset about it. I'm, I love this program very, very much. But when I'm looking at all of the reality that's in front of me, I think making the move at this time is the thing that is most fair to students and families and makes the most sense for our district long-term. Our last maintenance of equity reduction is related to tuition and that is college tuition for our staff. All of our contracts have benefits related to tuition. We anticipated that the use of tuition would go down a number of years ago when we updated our certification plan. And that's something that came to you as the board. It's available on our website if you ever want to see it. But we updated our plan to give teachers more flexibility in how they earn their hours for their recertification. And it was to be sensitive to the fact that there are very many learning experiences beyond just college courses that are just as effective, if not more effective than, than college tuition. So we, so we op, we opened some options. We wondered at the time if usage of that benefit would go down. Now, at the same time, we kind of had COVID where kids, where kids, teachers, they sort of slowed down on taking college courses at that time. So we didn't want to make a change right away, but we've been keeping an eye on it and we feel like it's kind of leveled out and the usage has gone down quite a bit. So we believe we can make some tuition reductions across the budget to be, to align more with what the spending has been and what we anticipate it will be. In addition to those kind of maintenance of equity reductions, we have deprioritized some of those needs that we brought forward. We are proposing that we delay the increase of ed techs to 35 hours, that we put that off to potentially even part of contract negotiations instead. We believe we can move the psychology intern investment into local entitlement and not have to hit the bottom line for that. We are proposing not to add regular ed summer education programs and not have summer school this year. We are looking at middle school math. Part of that proposal that came forward in the needs includes professional development for teachers. We believe we can pay for that out of Title II funds and take that off the local. We want to look at, instead of outright purchases of our buses and vans, instead of three-year leasing cycle. What that means is that as, as we try to get to that level off I was telling you about, instead of being a couple hundred thousand, you know, 400,000 in one year, we're looking at 80,000 in one year, 30 or 40,000 the year after that. So it ends up being incremental over three years and we hit that steady place that we've been talking about where we sort of have a continuous investment in our, in our transportation fleet after three years. So looking at three incremental increases over the next three years instead of doing it all in this current school year. We're looking at deferring the bus lift purchase. There was some improvement made to the lift. It can't put the whole bus up, but it can put one end or the other now. And then we also have other options for, for our mechanics. Is it perfect? It is not, but they are able to do a lot of work still, even with that, with that bus lift. Leave in the cellular radios and leave it, leave in some of those other purchases in transportation and defer the bus lift to a future year. And then we had originally proposed putting 150,000, increasing the facility's investment by 150,000. We're going to recommend that we instead look at doing an incremental increase of about $50,000, extend that over five years, trying to get to a place where we're continually investing in our schools and instead have a conversation as a board about starting to use some of our capital reserve to invest and offset that in, in investment. So for example, if we were to stay with the 150,000 number that we're trying to increase it by, add 50 to the local budget and look at accessing 100 out of the capital reserve. In the next steps, you'll see that I have a bigger and deeper conversation about that scheduled for us for next week. Once we make those changes and those reductions, it brings us to where we are as of today, proposed draft as of 3/19, of $35,721,378. That's a $2.4 million increase over last year. It equates to about a 7.26. For reference, a week ago at this time, we were at 7.84. You just said two different numbers, didn't you? 7.84. So when we presented it to finance committee, we were at 7.84. In the work we've done in the last week, we've been able to bring it to 7.26. How that breaks out? Cause what, what, how does, I think it's always good to know how, how, when you look at that 7.26, where is a 7.26 going? So if you look across this pie chart, if you add up all those numbers, they, they should add up to 7.26. 1.12% of that increase is related to the bond that the community has already voted to approve. 2.01% is health insurance. 3.44% is our contractual salary increases. .35% is some of that other maintenance of equity. Tuition, which is our out of district placement, actually is now going to be going down. I didn't want to just take it out because I had had it in there for finance committee. Our next round won't have that in there because we've moved that around. And then the needs, that needs list that we came up with represents about .77%. So when we say, how much of our budget is addressing what we said we needed, it's about .77% increase is addressing our needs. How this looks over time, these are all our budget increases percent on year over year, going back to 2014, 2015. You can see we've kind of been all over the place. We've had high years and we've had very low years. This, if, you know, if it were to say it's 7.26, which I'm going to tell you, we are continue working. So please don't run and yell from the hilltops that this is the number. We are continuing our work. But if it were to say it's 7.26, it would be the largest proposed in recent history. However, it would bring that 10-year average to 4.03%. So if we were to move forward with a 7.26% increase, our percent increase over the last 10 years would be 4%. How does that look around the region? This is data generously provided by my colleagues around the state. This is as of Monday. I'm sure some of these numbers have changed since then. As I know, they are all in meetings with their boards, much like we are. These are the districts in our area we generally have compared to. You'll see that that first line tells you what they have estimated their population to be for '25, '26. So you can see which ones are kind of a little bigger, a little smaller and about our size. The second line is what they have proposed for an increase from a percent standpoint. The third line is what that means in dollars. And where I think that's important to note is, for example, Falmouth, who is proposing at this time a 5.97% increase. So when you look at them around the area, you think, wow, they're a lot lower than everyone else. That proposed, the dollar figure is 2.9 million. So even though our number is 7.26%, our dollar is 2.4 million. Theirs is five, you know, 6% and it's 2.9 million. So it's sort of, we, we added that in so that folks can kind of get a reference point. Falmouth is one of the biggest spenders, which is then the bottom line. 2324 is the most recent data available on the ESSA data dashboard, which again is a public website anyone can look at. This is the per pupil spending. So how this chart is organized is from left to right, it is the lowest per student investor to the highest per student investor. The state average of investing in students, per student is 20,139. So what you can see is that we aren't terribly far out of where the rest of our colleagues are. So as I started to put this together and I thought, oh my gosh, what am I doing wrong? In talking with my colleagues, they're all experiencing the same things we are. They got the 17% email about health insurance too. So you can see, we, we unfortunately aren't alone. I was hoping someone had a magic plan I could, I could go steal. But we're all pretty close to the same boat. The other note I wanted to make on this is you do see that RSU 14 Wyndham Raymond currently has a 14% increase. 8% of that 14% is the bond of their new middle school coming into play for the coming school year. They are building a brand new middle school. They did get the vast majority of it funded by the state, but this is the town's portion of what that new building is going to cost. And so as, as we've talked about in bonding over the years, you see that when it comes due, you see a big increase. RSU 14 is going to be experiencing that next year and then it'll level off until those payments start to go away. And then they see big decreases because the payments filter off. So that is kind of the one outlier, but that is the primary reason they are investing in a new school. So let's talk about the flip side, the revenue. So our proposed ED 279, keep in mind that's a draft. This is the money that the state is predicting they will issue to MSAD 15 schools for our operations. It's $12,256,246. That's a little over $350,000 increase over last year. We like revenue increases. Other revenue influences, as presented by Mr. Priest, we are proposing the elimination of pay-to-play athletics. Currently, families have to pay in order for their students to participate in athletics. We are one of the only districts that do that in the area and in the state. And we believe it is a barrier to some families for their kids to participate. Even though we have programs to help families that have needs, there are many families who don't feel comfortable accessing them. So we think it's important to prioritize eliminating pay-to-play. That's going to reduce our revenue by about $15,000. We are budgeting in a reduction in tuition from RSU 14, as I shared with you in our enrollment. We anticipate eventually, we're going to see very, we're going to see a lot fewer Raymond kids coming to Gray New Gloucester because they'll be going into Wyndham for the new middle school. Whereas right now, they do middle school in Raymond and then they decide to come to us. We suspect that fewer students are going to choose to come here once they're already attending school in Wyndham. So we don't really anticipate seeing that for a few more years yet, but we wanted to start to anticipate it in our revenue in the coming year. So we did do a small reduction to the RSU 14 revenue. Our bank interest is up, so that's very exciting. That's another 19,000. And then in our initial recommendation, something that will be a big conversation of the board, is that we use a million dollars of carryover or fund balance towards our FY '26 revenue so we can reduce what we have to go to taxpayers for. So let's get into those estimated tax impacts. So our general fund increase, as you'll see, is $2,416,590 over, for the proposed year over the current school year. You'll also see that adult ed number to get to the $35,846,393 number, an increase of 2.4 million. You'll then see on the revenue side, our ED 279 number. Um, the twenty-four, twenty-five, I think is important to note, if you look back at our budget materials, that number was a little bit different because what we're given is an ED two-seventy-nine draft and they then changed the number. This was just a little bit lower. Um, they ended up giving us just a little bit less than they thought they were going to. That could happen again this year, could be a little bit more. It happens every year. Um, but if that number looks different, that's why. Um, so the proposed is up about three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars. Uh, last year we used one-point-five million from fund balance to offset revenue. If we use one million this year, it would represent a half-million-dollar reduction in revenue. We're also, uh, looking at about a nine-thousand-dollar in miscellaneous revenue. Um, and then that would bring, including adult ed, the local contribution, um, to twenty-two million, I'm sorry, would bring the local contribution to twenty-two million, one-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents in order to meet the expense budget. How that then plays out, because in our, uh, in our charter, we've got sixty, sixty-six-point-seven-one percent of that dollar figure attributed to Gray, thirty-three-point-two-nine to New Gloucester. That would mean, um, just under fifteen million to Gray and, um, just over seven million to New Gloucester. That was a lot of data. I apologize, but it is a budget. Uh, so our next steps, um, outstanding information, we're waiting on health insurance. Unfortunately, health insurance often comes in at the last minute. That could be a, um, dream dasher or a dream maker. Um, if we're budgeting twelve and it comes in at eight, it changes things. If we're budgeting twelve and it comes in at seventeen, dream dasher. So we're waiting for that. Um, and then fund balance and capital fund, uh, is a discussion for us to have to see what kind of investment we want to use in the funds that we have. Uh, the work you'll see, we're continuing that refinement work and that line item review. We haven't worked with every department yet. Um, we're spending some time looking at the IEP needs and make sure that what we have for staffing really is, um, targeted at the specific needs that we're seeing. And then we have a budget workshop next week, followed by, um, the finance committee will then take on the budget as their own on April ninth. You as a board will vote on the sixteenth, sign the warrants on May seventh. We'll send out a budget publication sometime in between there, once the budget number's a little more finalized. And then we have our budget validation meeting on May twenty-second at the high school, followed by the referendum on the tenth. So still a ways to go. It's been a long way and a ways to go. So we'll take, um, the opportunity to take questions at this time, um, but I did want to bookmark for you that at next week's workshop, I have two, um, agenda items that I want to bring forward for deep discussion. So I would say like, we can probably answer some questions about it, but if we want to kind of engage in board discussion, I might, I might suggest we do it next week. Um, one is on staffing and enrollment over time. I shared at the finance committee that, um, while we've been, while we saw our population go down, we've also been reducing teachers over time to match that enrollment change. So, um, Dunn School, for example, when I first started here, we had fifteen classroom teachers at Dunn. Now we only have twelve because as the population reduced, we reduced the number of teachers that we have. We don't think that that's data that's been really easily shared with you in the past. So we're trying to put together something that is very concise, very understandable, um, of how our enrollment has gone down and how, um, we've made some, um, staffing adjustments to match. So, um, I'll be bringing you that report next week. And then the other, um, is just to do a presentation on what we have for capital reserve and fund balance, what we're allowed to do with that money, what we're not allowed to do with that money. I think that's something that people always have a lot of questions about, so, um, it would be really beneficial. Jen actually did a presentation to our admin team off the cuff. I didn't warn her, I just said, hey, can you talk about this? And she did a great job. Um, even I think our admin team, who knows a lot, learned a few things, um, about that. So I think it would be beneficial for us to, to talk about that. What, what are we allowed to do? What aren't we allowed to do? And then kick off a board discussion about what we want to do based on that. So those are the two things I think are important we talk about, um, deeply next week. And from there, I will turn it back over to the chair.
All right. Thank you. Well done. That was a, a lot of information. Um, as we talked about at the, for those of us who got a chance to see the version of this at the finance committee, um, I think this is really digestible and well-presented. Um, and I love the format, so I appreciate all the effort that went into this. Questions? Comments? Thoughts?
Well, Gary's got his hands up.
I just, I just, um, a point that I think that we ought to make sure we amplify is that if we take out the one point, uh, I made a note here somewhere, the one-point-one-two increase for the bond, which was voted on in full knowledge, that would drop our actually in, actual increase down to be the lowest in the county. Um, puts us back down to six-point-one-four of actual increases. So that, I'm not, I mean, obviously it's something we have to take into consideration, but I do think that the rest of, the rest of the increase is not out of, as far out of whack as it might appear. I mean, like I said, if we took that one-point-one-two out, then suddenly we're below Poland.
It's a reasonable, um, thing to communicate to folks when we stopped to, to point out that Wyndham's amount was based on a bond that they approved, so why would we not?
Not point out the same for ourselves.
And I think when, when we mention the bond, we want to make sure people understand it's the ventilation and air improvement.
Yes, the air quality improvement. Thank you.
Because that's the least discussed bond of all the ones we've talked about the last five years.
And work is underway in our schools right now.
Probably want to make sure people understand that when we're referring to the bond, that we're actually talking about that one.
The air quality. Yes.
No, it's just an observation. Apart from that, I don't have anything.
Go for it.
Okay. So the advisory program.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, eliminating that position.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I think we've heard about that over time.
Mm-hmm.
How is that program going to live beyond this year?
Excellent question. Um, so as we designed this three-year process, part of this third year was the warm handover to the buildings. The ultimate people responsible for this are the two building principals. Um, and frankly, the ultimate responsibility for this is mine, right? And to make sure that the building principals are doing what they're supposed to be doing. So I will be on top of them to make sure that it continues. Um, we then are transitioning much of the response, like the day-to-day responsibility, helping people with lessons, um, identifying new areas that we think we need to create lessons on, that sort of work will live in the guidance offices of the two schools under the direction of the principals. And that has been a phased transition over the course of this year. Having that person that's knocking on your door and reminding you every five minutes, of course, is super valuable. Um, so making sure it is in our strategic plans, so we're constantly coming back to it, um, and make sure that we don't lose the good that we have come and we continue to grow and improve the program. Um, but we're at a place where it can't be something separate and special. It has to be part of how we do business and we do business in our schools under the direction of the principals.
All right. Uh, my second question is the summer school.
Yes.
I think we've talked about it in the past, it's hard to staff.
Correct.
What's the, what's the cost savings of that program?
About two-hundred thousand dollars. We've, we've spent about two-hundred thousand dollars of grant funds over the last few years. Um, we originally did programs at Memorial, Russell, Dunn and the middle school. Um, I'd, I'd have to go back in the, back in the troves to find out what that cost. Um, it, it has slowly shrunk down to the point that we really only do K-two at this point. It's about a hundred thousand dollars to run the K-two program. That includes, uh, transportation, um, food that's not covered by the USDA program, uh, teachers, staff, materials. It's about two-hundred thousand altogether.
So what is that, what's that mean to our district as far as our kids go? Like how much of an impact? Cause I mean, we talked about, we're still hearing about COVID five years later, right? So what is that going to do to our students?
So we can't say for certain. Um, and, and part of the way I think we're trying to tell ourselves it'll be okay, um, is that taking a year off will tell us for sure. Uh, because we've been doing summer programs for so long, it's hard to say that the improvements that we're seeing in kids entering kindergarten, entering first grade and entering second grade are because of this program. We think that it is. Um, but we've had it for so long, it's a little bit hard to, hard to say with any like amount of definitive causal statement. Taking a summer off is going to give us a causal. If we're not seeing significant, uh, significant changes in how kids are, um, entering kindergarten and first grade in particular, um, and second grade, then we're going to know that it was an investment that had a huge impact. Uh, generally speaking, what we see for kids in the, the goal of a summer program is to make sure that kids don't drop. So usually what happens is, and it's called summer slide is the word that we use in education. Um, when they leave us, you know, they might be at a reading score of this and when they come back, you know, most kids have dropped a little bit because the focus on reading academics in the summer. Um, you know, even my own children who live with educators and have books shoved in their face all the time would have a little bit of a drop over the course of summer. What we would see particularly when we, um, would focus on our kids who are struggling the most is that, um, sometimes their number would grow, but most of the time it would maintain. And that was really our biggest goal was to make sure that what they left us and when they came back, they didn't slide back because they, they are the kids that didn't have any room, right? They're already behind everyone else. They don't have any room to slide back more. Um, so the, the primary goal, you know, a successful summer program brings kids in where they left you. If you grow them, even better. Um, and we, and we did have kids who would grow with us over the summer and that was always very exciting. Um, so what we're going to see is what, or the data we're looking to collect is, um, what percentage of students had decreases, stayed the same or increases in the past few summers and compare that to what, you know, if we move forward with not, and, and more grant funding doesn't come available. I mean, you never know when some grant funding would come available. I am always happy to throw in a grant application for funding. Um, assuming we move forward without it, we would then collect that data again and do some comparative analysis and see if we can come up with any causal relationships that would indicate more strongly about whether that should be an investment of local funds or not.
Uh, my final one is, uh, the cellular radios. So, um, in facilities, we've talked about it a couple of different times. I haven't really got a clear answer yet if it's a, if it's a better system than really what we have. I heard it's a little bit better, but is it, is it going to be worth the investment? I guess that's, because I know that in our, uh, area of coverage where our buses drive, I mean, radios do have a hard time, but also cellular has a hard time. So, um, I, I guess I would just question that, how, how much more beneficial is it going to be?
Um, so I'm going to bookmark that as something to bring back for next week with some hard data. I will say we, we talked about it at admin, at administrative team this week and we were kind of talking about what are we going to prioritize and deprioritize. Um, feedback from the principals has been huge, that those buses that have those cellular radios, that it has been, I think the words Jeff used was game changer, complete game changer. They can now reach buses directly when they rarely could do that before. And they also, they often had to have relay, right? They would radio one bus that would then, that was halfway, that would then radio the next bus. They now can directly reach buses they've never been able to reach before. So anecdotally, the principals are thrilled, um, with just those that we have piloted, but let me bring back some like harder numbers other than just principals are thrilled.
Just a follow-up question, the summer school. Um, it's part of the staffing on that, we begin staffing that with teachers already teaching for us, don't we? And it's sort of, they self-identify as being interested in teaching. And my understanding is that over time, less than, fewer and fewer are really excited about teaching during the summer. That's our, that's models other places. Is that what we're finding here also?
Yeah. Thank you for asking that question because it is not exclusive to our staff and, and I know area school districts, um, that are offering teachers seventy-five-hundred dollars an hour to come in and teach summer school and they still can't staff their summer programs. Seventy-five dollars an hour is not uncommon. Um, that is not what we pay. We have increased what we pay. We aren't quite there. Um, but when I look at those schools and I think, wow, you're, you're offering a hundred dollars an hour and you still can't staff your summer programs, um, it, what it tells me is that staff need a break. Um, being in education's really hard right now. It's really hard and you don't get a break from it and all you're trying to do is show up and do good things for kids every day. Um, and it's, it's, it's a really hard place to be. It's taking its toll and they need their breaks. Um, I would say what hurt us a bit last year is that we went very late into June. And so then when you start before Labor Day, it makes that summer real short. And then if we're asking them to spend five weeks teaching, um, that was, we had teachers just said, we need, we need a break. Um, so that's what we're seeing mostly. We have tried hiring teachers from the outside, um, and we have used some teachers from other school districts that, you know, maybe they vacation in Gray or, you know, Gray's closer to home, you know, whatever reason, they don't want to, they don't want to teach in the community they live in, but they'll do summer school in the community they live in. Um, I would say it, it wasn't as impactful. One of the really, I think, strong impactful pieces of summer school is it's these teachers that kids already have a relationship with generally, and that lets them pick right up where they left off versus coming in and meeting someone they've never met before, who's never taught in that school before, who doesn't know the kids and it's just five weeks. Um, that hiring from the outside isn't, isn't super impactful in the same way that our own staff is. So when our staff isn't super excited to do it, you know, if, if we need like one to like round out a program, we might consider it. Um, but if we're talking about staffing the vast majority with outside folks, I'm, I'm not sure it's worth the investment.
Uh, for clarity's sake for folks, summer school and, uh, kids who qualify for extended school year are two different things.
Are two different things.
So we would still have the extended school.
Yes, under the Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act or IDEA, you hear talked about a lot, um, as part of the IEP process, students who would regress in their IEP goals over the summer, um, may be, um, considered an accommodation to have a summer program or what's called extended school year. Um, and so that's very focused, it's a very specific criteria that's decided in the IEP meeting, the IEP setting. Um, and so that program will continue. We are, we are federally mandated to do that. And so that program will continue. That lives in the special education, um, lines of our budget.
Anybody else? Sam?
Uh, just, uh, more of a parking lot question or a data visualization thing. Um, you know, the pie chart with the kind of where the increases are coming from, a similar way that we've kind of visualized this in the past is how much of the increase is due to the contractual obligation of the two contracts? You know, we have raises built in there and, you know, just super big numbers, what'd we say, two-point-five million going up in the suggested, I, my guess is one-point-five or eight million of that is the teacher and support staff contracts.
Three-point-four-four percent.
So that, that's.
Yeah, that big blue chunk is.
That's just, so that's, just the, yeah. So, I mean, there's half of the increase right there. We're not going to do that. You know, I think we have to meet our contractual obligations. I don't think there's any way around that. Um, clarity question, uh, I'm pretty sure this is right, but you said one-point-five FTE at the secondary level.
Correct.
One half of that, what's a half-time music teacher and a full-time language teacher?
That's what we're thinking right now.
Okay. I wasn't sure if that was both or together.
No, that's, it's point-five music, one-point-oh world language.
Um, and do we have, uh, retirements built into this?
It built into the budget?
Yeah.
So yes, I mean, unfortunately you don't actually get great savings from retirements in the first year because we're paying out the contractual pieces related to retirement. Um, we didn't have very many this year, so when you only have very men, when you don't have very many, you don't see the savings in the first year of the budget. You tend to see it in the second year of the budget, assuming we hire on someone who, um, costs less than the person that's exiting.
I mostly meant, uh, other retirements that might be opportunities to.
Oh, for reductions. Um, yeah, I mean, as you said, anytime we have a retirement, that's what we're looking at. Um, we are looking, uh, we've got a retirement in special education at middle school and we have been sort of revamping, uh, and thinking about how we do middle school. Unfortunately, we're seeing some pretty big shifts in what's coming into the middle school, so I don't think that's probably going to be an opportunity. Um, and then we have the one at the high school. Is there another one? I think that might be it.
It's just, I think it's something we have to consider when we look at a number, uh, increasing this much. I think we have to consider that. And I hate to say this out loud and I know that this runs counter to many arguments I've made here, but, um, we have always operated under a mission to try to keep our kids on campus as much as possible. We've done as many athletic and co-curricular uh activities as we can lay our hands on, which I have always been a big supporter of. Uh, but at this point, I feel as though I'm on an island. Uh, we have added these athletics. We have not added uh capacity for them to practice, to do the things that they do. We are promising kids that they can be on X Y Z team. And then we give them half as much practice as they deserve and we set them up for failure. Um, and I think we have to consider whether we need to reduce the amount of athletics and co-curricular activities that we offer. They're expensive. Um, and so I would support a look at the athletic budget. Over time, we very rarely look at the athletic budget in isolation. It ha absolutely has gone up since I've been here considerably. We've added lacrosse teams. We've added, you know, teams all over the place. I support that. I argued I wanted that. But we have asked the community on multiple occasions to help us serve those kids. They have told us unequivocally, no. We do not want more fields. We do not want more space for them to play in a gym. We do not want them uh more place for them to do their theater and music. And so I think it's unfair to the kids to keep telling them, yes, you can have this club and team and whatever. And then say, but you're going to have to do it in this, you know, completely inappropriate and not good enough facility. And further, we are destroying our fields. They're overused. We know they're overused. We've seen the data that they're overused over and over and over again. If we keep running all these teams out there, we're going to get into a situation where we're completely upside down on our fields and it gets much worse than it is right now. So, you know, I feel like we have to hear a proposal on some kind of reduction in the amount of teams that we offer. Or we're just, we're just talking past ourselves, if you ask me. It's just, it's unfair. And I see it all the time. The kids are crowded. They have no place to play. They're in the parking lot. And I don't think that's better, actually. I think at this point, we should tell them to go to, you know, some sort of private athletic, you know, team or whatever it is where their facilities match. The problems is that they've been made.
Craig?
Okay. Um, so uh one thing I need to have clarified is uh when you mentioned about the teachers taking college courses. Now, there's professional um requirements every year for professionals to take, you know, up-to-date information, that type of thing. Are we, so if we're paying for their college education, I assume they're going for their masters. They have to be an undergraduate, right? Are we paying for their masters? And if if that's the case, how long do they say once they've attained that? So I need a clarification in that whole picture.
So the um teacher contract includes a benefit that um they are, they are allowed to take up to two courses per year at the graduate level at the University of Maine rate. So that is a benefit available to them in their contract. Some teachers take that benefit, others do not. That is their choice whether they do that or not, but it's a benefit that's available to them. And so what we're seeing is that we think due to some other changes in how teacher recertification works, we have fewer teachers taking advantage of that benefit than we have in the past. And we've seen that 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 trend has stayed with us. There was a dip and we said, okay, well, let's just wait a minute and make sure that's the case before we start reducing our budget. The dangerous part about reducing budgets for that benefit is that if we say we're going to budget, let's say, for example, for ten courses this year. And we have teachers come forward and they actually, there are fifteen contract benefits. We have to pay for fifteen. It is in their contract. I can't look at them and say, sorry, I didn't budget for that. I would have to go into the budget and find the money someplace else. And go to the finance committee and say, I need this money, move from this account to this account. Because more teachers than I thought decided to take courses because it is their contract benefit that they can choose to take or not. So what we're proposing is that we align the budget with the spending over the last five to seven years. Because the budgets have been higher than what we've actually spent for quite a few years now. So we think we can comfortably move that more in line with what we've been actually spending. And then, you know, we did actually like go through teacher by teacher and think about like, you know, is this one getting ready to do a master's program? Have they shared that with us? Um, is this one, you know, there are others that were like, that person we know really um prefers PD that's not course-based. So we we anticipate that problem, that person probably won't. But it is our best estimate. Um, we aren't cutting it all the way to the spending level because again, we can get caught with that. It is the teacher's prerogative to use that benefit, whether we budgeted it for it or not. Um, so we're trying to be cautious in that reduction, but we do feel confident that we're in a place where we can align the budget a little closer to what the spending is than what has been in the past.
Okay, um, I have another question regarding um the uh technology. Oh, first of all, before I get to that one, the safety on the uh the lift. I I think I'm a little concerned about so a piece of heavy equipment not operating, you know, for what it's intended for. And that there could be an accident. And of course, it costs the district a lot of money for something like that. Not saying that they're responsible or anything, and I, I'm just thinking that that could be a um something that we should be looking at.
And we are. We're not saying we should take that off forever. We're just saying we should delay it a little bit. The lift as is has been um approved to be used as we're using it. Um, and we're using what's called bottle jacks and we talk a lot about this at at facilities, so um feel free to come on down when we talk about it, but they're using something called bottle jacks, which does um bring, they can do the work. The difference is they have to, they can do the work safely. The difference is they have to do the work laying on a rolly cart. What's it called?
Creeper.
A creeper? Thank you. I'm like, I don't know, you lay on it and you roll around. Um, on a ro- on on a creeper underneath versus if we had a fully functional lift, we could take the entire bus and put it up so that they could stand and do their work. Um, so yes, uh, long-term, that would be the ideal situation to replace it. We are able to do a lot of work, if not most of the work we would want to do, and do it safely in the situation we're currently in. So we feel like we're better off investing in cellular radios and the software in this current year and delay that lift for a future year.
So uh onto the uh main question, I think at the finance committee, I mentioned about the uh technology uh fund. And um I I asked if um that uh amount of money um uh included, you know, the um the rehab or whatever you call it for the computers, you know, replacement of the computers. And as I was going through the expenditure report, I didn't realize that we budgeted six hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. So I'm going to assume that that number includes the rehab of the computers. We still have um thirty percent of the money remaining on that. And um then, as you go through the budget, you see other line items regarding technology in a different department. So for the next meeting, if I can have an answer to that question about uh is that six hundred including the rehab? I'll call it rehab. I know you have a different word for it.
Yeah, I'm not sure I'm totally understanding your question.
Well, we had, when we replaced all the computers, we had to put it in the budget.
When we did the device refresh in the budget last year.
So is that part of the six hundred and forty-nine thousand? And.
And where are you seeing the six hundred and forty-nine thousand number? I just want to make sure I understand what you're looking at.
Two two three O technology.
What is the report you're pulling this off of? I didn't provide that to you. The expenditure report from the finance committee.
Right.
From last week.
Right.
Thank you.
And when I had asked at that meeting about having uh a clarification as to um what we have, since then, I've gone into this even more in-depth and I realized we have technology on all these lines. So I personally, hopefully the rest of the board, would like to have a total picture of what we are really spending for technology. And the thing that really caught me was um the county commissioner reported to the town uh the other other night. Their technology budget is a hundred and sixty thousand for Cumberland County for the sheriff's department. So I kind of like to try to find out, you know, get a handle on that, those numbers. Okay, so that's where.
I'm not sure it's comparable, but I'd be happy to provide you with our data. Um, so uh, okay, so a total picture of what we're spending on. And and when we get to the place, and I'm, thank you for bringing that up, because when we get to the place where we are bringing you the line item budget, you're going to see a lot of things moved around in technology specifically to what you're talking about. There are technology lines in technology and then there are technology lines that live in the departments and in the schools. And we've been working really hard to be very clear as a as a team in our office and with the um technology department and with our building principles about what expenses should go in what places. It's one of those situations where you can put them in multiple places. It's not really wrong to do it one place or another. Um, but there are things we think make more sense living in the technology budget instead of in the school level budget and vice versa. So you're going to see a lot of plus here and minus there. And it's a lot of us just moving where we think those expenses are most appropriately charged. Um, and kind of coming to an agreement of this is how we will do business moving forward. So it continues to be, you know, a little more transplant and a little transparent and a little more clear. Um, so I think, um, all right, so we can look at what is the total picture of what we're spending and you'd like some information about specifically what that is spent on.
Yeah, the total actual budget for technology. No matter how it's chopped up, what's the bottom line altogether for technology? And making sure I understand that the uh revamping of the computers or getting new computers was included in that um number.
And are you talking about last year's expense or you're talking about the budget we just approved, just proposed?
Uh, no, this one, the what the current budget that with the expenditure report that we have. So that was the a budget that we created last year for this year to spend.
Okay. So I might suggest we defer that to the finance committee because the finance committee is is who does expenditures. Um, I'm like, who's my finance committee chair? I forgot for a second. Sorry. Um, I might suggest we defer to their, just because I don't want to confuse conversations about last year's money with what we're proposing for next year. And I'm afraid if we do that in a budget workshop, it's going to get confusing. So I might suggest we push it to the finance committee. Which I think now that you say that I have it in my notes from finance committee to look at for next finance committee, I did not bring any information for that tonight because I want, I'd like to keep those pretty separate.
Okay.
Yeah, we can add it to the to the agenda for next month.
Good.
Jim?
Yes, I've got uh two questions pertaining to uh class sizes on slide thirteen. And you have a your district class goals. Uh, I'd kind of like to know what where we are within those goals. And uh I understand that the the state K through twelve, uh, I guess they have a max of twenty-five students.
No, there are no state regulations for class size. There are also no federal law regulations. There are regulations for pre-K. So you'll notice I don't have pre-K listed in here. It's because for pre-K, there is rules. You have to have one adult for every fifteen kids. Um, so I sort of leave pre-K out of that because there are rules. We we cannot move outside of that. This this district class size is a goal that we put in place, right? So our goal is at K two that we're sticking to between fifteen and twenty students. That we don't have classes smaller than fifteen, but we try not to have classes bigger than twenty. Um, as they get a little bit older, grades three through twelve, we try not to have classes smaller than twenty. We try not to have classes bigger than twenty-five. Every group's a little bit different and you see that ebb and flow over the course of the years. Um, if you look at the full staffing report that we presented um at that meeting, it will give you those populations for every class by class by class, grade by grade by grade, not just by grade span. It's much more detailed information. But essentially what happened is we look at, so if you look at the K two column, um, if you take how many students that we anticipate we will have in grades K through two next year, we would need somewhere between twenty-one and twenty-seven teachers. So we'd need twenty-one. If it was twenty kids per class, we'd need twenty-seven if we were fifteen kids per class. It never breaks out quite that cleanly because you've got some new Gloucester and some Gray. It's never quite that clean. But the range would be twenty-one to twenty-seven. We would need twenty-one to twenty-seven teachers to reach our goal. If you look at that top line, we currently have twenty-three. So if we, if you look at what is our district goal, our district goal is to be somewhere between fifteen and twenty per class. We need twenty-one to twenty-seven teachers to do that. We have twenty-three. We're probably about right-sized. For grades three and four, we need about eleven to fourteen teachers. We have twelve. So we're right about the right size. Five through eight, we would need twenty-two to twenty-six. We currently have twenty-four. High school is what starts to get a little a little squishy. Um, high school is a little bit different because um not all students are required to take all grades. So whereas we can say, we have a hundred and thirty first grade kids and we divide those evenly into classes. How many classes do we need? It's a very straightforward thing. At high school, we have some students, you know, they have to take their their basic requirements for graduation. Four credits of English, three credits of math, three credits of science, et cetera. But then they have electives choices. And then they have, on top of that, um, we have lots of kids that do extra. They do more than what they have to do for their diploma because they're interested in it or it's going to prepare them for their next path, whether that's college or career or whatever it is. So it's not quite as straightforward of a number. But if we do treat it as a straightforward number and we say we have this many students in our high school whose bodies need to be in a place at any given time during the day, um, we would need between twenty and twenty-four teachers to do that. And we currently have twenty-three. So that's where, when I say we think we're about right-sized with the number of teachers we have, that's why we say that.
Yeah, I guess uh I was mistaken in saying the state requirements is more of a suggested maximums. And uh I read that it was, you know, twenty-five for like K through eight. And then in high school, they had a suggested maximum of of higher than that. And I was wondering why.
Why we don't go with the higher?
Why we don't go with a little bit higher number? Because, I mean, I can see why you need a lot of eyeballs looking on, you know, five, six, uh, fifth, seventh and eighth graders. But I would think by the time they're eleventh and twelfth grade that uh that wouldn't be as much of a necess- a necessity.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So um it actually is more, I would say there's lots of reasons. The primary one I would tell you is facilities. If you go into one of our classrooms and you put twenty to twenty-five high school bodies in there, it's tight. If you try to put thirty kids in most of our classrooms, they they can't move. They can't breathe. Um, we'd have to buy more desks. We don't have enough desks and chairs. Um, so whether, so even if we would say from a um, from an academic standpoint, we think it would be okay if there were thirty kids per class, um, which I would contend thirty is a lot of even high school age kids. Um, ninth graders aren't that different from eighth graders. Um, that just from a facility standpoint alone, um, we don't have the space to fit that many kids in a class and we don't have the furniture to fit that many kids in a class. Um, so short term, if we were to try to turn that over as a way to save teachers, we would have to do some pretty significant facilities work and furniture purchases. One of the many reasons, that's one, that's one big one for me. Whenever I see, I can always tell when we're at in a class that's at that top of that like sort of twenty-five range. And we definitely have classes that have twenty-six and twenty-seven. Our goal is to keep it under twenty-five, but there are classes where they have more. You go into those classrooms, you can tell the difference. Those kids are crammed in there. Um, our our classrooms just weren't really designed to have that many students in a classroom.
Thank you.
Do you happen to know, does this budget include moving that portable building out of our parking lot and using it?
Great question, cool. So um we are going to suggest and and talk more next week about starting to use um upping the investment in our in our capital in our local budget. And then also starting to utilize some of our capital reserve to address the long list of needs. We have not yet gotten to the place where we have said, this is the project we want to do. Like, we want this much money and this is the project what we that we want to do. Um, we know we have an extensive list that a forty-million-dollar bond, right, would have covered some of it. So um there's definitely no lack of need on our list. Uh, we've been working and continuing to refine that prioritization list. Um, but we sort of, we sort of are want to look at what do we think we can invest in as a community? And then look at what what projects would that then equate to? So one of the big projects that we were looking at, um, that is a huge need is repaving the transportation center. Um, and putting down a concrete pad for the buses to park on because the buses are so heavy, they destroy the concrete very quickly. That's a three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar project. So as we were looking at, okay, if we increase our our investment in local money to three hundred thousand dollars, what would we do? And we went back to the kind of top things on our priority list. It was like, okay, so we could do one of them. We could pave the transportation center. And out of all the projects, I'm not sure that's the most exciting one, but it's one we really need. So um I would love to get that portable up and running. I would love for that to be a priority. We need to talk about, to talk as a board about how we want to use the money that we have available to us. How much we want to operationalize to invest in facilities for next year. And then we can kind of talk about how we prioritize our needs list within that amount.
I think I misunderstood. I thought that the portable was being used for the day one project.
Uh, we have two portables on high school campus. One, um, you are correct. The other was purchased as part of our COVID funds. But we ran into some issues with getting it hooked up, um, getting permitted to get it hooked up. And so it has been um, it's been sitting there, essentially used as storage for a little while. And and we're trying to reprioritize getting the permits that we need to get it hooked up so that we can use it. We would um replace the technology building and um transportation would move into that portable once it's ready to go.
Anybody else, folks we haven't heard from? Nope. All right. So plenty to think about for next week. I would invite folks to spend some time with these materials with the, also with the specific goal of being prepared to talk about that fund balance, capital reserve piece next week. If folks come up with additional parking lot questions, they can email them to Dr. Turner by the end of the week.
That would be fantastic. Or if, I know for finance, we had them, funneled them to Gary and the Gary compile the list, which there weren't any, so that worked out great. I'm, I'm happy to do it either way, whatever you prefer.
Happy to help.
It would, it wouldn't hurt to have, you know, Gary kind of compile them because then it's helpful if some people have the same question. I'm not getting multiple.
They should go to you or Gary first.
Stan believes they should go to me or Gary first. Noted. Folks can feel free to, why don't we send them to Gary then? Because he's been compiling some budget-related thoughts from the, from the finance committee, so.
And we will make sure we come prepared next week with whatever those are.
All right. And then under other, I actually have no other, neither does Dr. Turner. I think Maggie was being generous with us in case we needed it, so we will adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.